Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, Tuesday, February 13, 2018. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:15, and I just wanted to apologize for us being late this evening. We did have a lot of discussion to do. We had an executive session today at 5:00 PM, and it went over the required time that we had allotted. Moving on, Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt?
Present.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Madsen?
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here. Today, we had the executive session with our semester, and it was regarding legal matters pertaining to the city of Harrisburg. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Allitt?
Yes, thank you. First, we'll mention the loss of definitely a city icon, particularly in downtown community, Charlie Wise, who owned the Shoe and Hat Store, Wise Brothers Shoe and Shine on Walnut Street. For anyone living and working downtown, you probably have stopped in a Shoe Shine or something along that line. But he did pass away recently, and I wanted to announce that services in his remembrance will be on Saturday, March 3, at 12:00 noon in the State Capitol in the East Wing Rotunda. I want to pause in memory of Charlie, but also certainly as we pause to give thought to those less fortunate than us. And obviously, we live in a community with needs, and let us always keep those less fortunate than us in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Ms. Green?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to communications tonight, we have Ms. Elise Ervis from Community First Fund. Would you come forward, please, Ms. Ervis? Ms. Ervis, you can sit down in the seat right there. And is the mic on?
It's on.
It's on.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elise Ervis. I am the Business Development Officer for Community First Fund here in Harrisburg. Community First Fund is a nonprofit community development financial institution, and this evening I came to invite everyone here in this space to an event next Saturday, a Community First Fund event. It's called A Seat at the Table, February 24, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, at Startup Harrisburg Facility, right on Third and Bose. It's an entrepreneur, business development, networking workshop. And if you don't know about Community First Fund, Community First has garnered a longstanding and proven track record, 25 years of expanding access to capital for startup businesses and established entrepreneurs, especially those of color. What we're seeking to do with our Take a Seat at the Table event is to further realize our mission by taking a holistic approach to assisting current and aspiring entrepreneurs with their business development needs. Attendees can look forward to a robust agenda, which will include presentations from Cram on the art of grant writing, the Catamaran Tech Accelerator Hub, which is right here in downtown Harrisburg. SCORE will be there to present on how to get your business on paper. And of course, the African-American Chamber of Commerce of Central Pennsylvania will be present to discuss their new membership package that they're launching in 2018 for Black businesses and entrepreneurs, as well as their business boot camp that they host every spring. Light fare and refreshments will also be provided. And you know, what's really unique about A Seat at the Table, this event on the 24th, is that we're not just merely looking to share business-based knowledge and leave attendees to figure things out on their own. Rather, we seek to directly invite attendees to the proverbial roundtable so that we can equip them with the confidence, the resources, as well as the post-event support, so that they're able to be successful in running their business. So whether you're simply entertaining the prospects of starting your own business, or you're interested in expanding the scope of an already current business, we invite you to come and take your seat at the table with us, February 24. Community First Fund is here. I've left contact and marketing materials at the front desk so that you can grab on your way out. If we don't get a chance to communicate directly today, I would love to sit down with any entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs who are present today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ervis, is there any questions, councilmembers?
Can you say to the public to hear the date and the time one more time?
February 24, that's next Saturday, starting at 3:00 PM. Will wrap up at 6:00 PM. The address is 922 North Third Street. It's on the corner of Third and Bose, and it's called The Startup Building.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ervis. Anyone else? But thank you, Ms. Ervis.
Thank you for your time.
You're quite welcome. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, at this time, we ask anyone to my right who would like to come to the mic, please do so.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Del Ford. I live at 2033 Bellevue Road in Harrisburg. I stand before you today as Executive Director of Impact Harrisburg, and I would just make just a few brief comments. The first is that Council President Williams has invited me to give a presentation, an update to this body, on the work of Impact Harrisburg, and I will confer with your administrator and get on the calendar to do that, so that by the end of this month or early next month, you will have a full review of all of the 14 projects in which we are engaged with the city. And I would just, when I say the city, I mean the city at large, as well as the city administration. I would like to point out, however, this evening, two projects. The first is the Mulder Square Project. I'd like to point out that Impact Harrisburg is very proud to have been a participant in to have served as a participant in the Mulder Square Project. We have given a $350,000 community development grant to the Tri-County Housing Development Corporation, and so we are very proud that we will be a part of the ribbon-cutting that will take place this Thursday, and that we are really helping to really help all the residents of Harrisburg, from the top to the bottom, to, you know, and across all aspects of this community. That's the work that we're supposed to do. The second is, we're also very pleased and proud to talk about the relationship that we have forged with the Community First Fund, to start a loan program. Some of you have heard about that. We will be bringing that online very soon, and it will work with various members of our community to provide access to capital to startup businesses or those who are already in business. And when I give our presentation, you will hear more about that. We are very proud of that, and the board is very excited about that, and we are really, really looking forward to forging a strong relationship with Community First Fund. And then finally, I would also, at the time that I talk to you, provide an update on the multimodal facility, which I know a number of you have asked me about, and I've provided information on a one-on-one basis to you, but I'd like to talk about that, you know, as a to you as a whole body, and answer all the questions that you might have. So thank you. I will work with your administrator on getting on your calendar and giving your presentation. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left, my right? I'm sorry.
All right. Greetings, Honorable Counsel. My name is Kaldeen Rashid, and I reside in the 1800 block of North Sixth Street. Tonight, I would like to bring up a few issues and help clear the air on a few things. And the first one would be concerning the 12th Annual Veteran Stand Down that was held at the 28th Infantry National Guard Armory on February 19 to the 21st, 2018. Previous emails were sent out to most of you regarding the lack of media coverage, and at the same time, the lack of any presence of any government officials. I seem to remember well when several of you, not specifically you, when several of you were sitting here in this room, made it a point to be there in years gone by. Without repeating all the things that I've already said in prior emails and media comments, I want to say how disappointed I am that none of you were there this year, after all the hard work and fundraising efforts of the YWCA and the VFWs. I was there all three days. Was I homeless veteran? Absolutely. I was living in a building I had no idea Harrisburg City Codes had listed as condemned, and we will get to that in a minute, because it's looking more and more like the city is doing a little of its own self-serve evictions. At the Stand Down, I had an opportunity to speak with Widener Law students for well over an hour on self-serve evictions in the city of Harrisburg, that there appears to be no end in sight, that the need for class-action lawsuits against slum lords who do this is the right move, if you can find enough affected tenants that have been made homeless. During the talk, one of our honored councilwomen, women's name came up, and that would be Ms. Daniels. I told them how, when she first became involved in city politics, how she once sat in the same chair as at the Stand Down, and that we talked about the same issue regarding self-serve eviction years ago. On February 7, 2018, at District Justice Zozo's office, Harrisburg City Codes Enforcement Officer Joe Farrell appeared with a case log so thick against property owners that the entire day of civil court cases was taken up by him. Along the way, as he kept winning, I got hit by the ricochet, and being forced out of my home at the same time saw several others in the building situate, under an apparent second notice to vacate the premises, which I was not aware of. So on Friday, February 16, two days from now, three, 2018, the city gang would be there to throw everybody out by force if necessary. After all the years I have been a Citizens Code Inspector, caught up in the red tape lately of just trying to get 1921 Logan Street bulldozed, a March 16, 2017 Fox 43 story, after officials met to discuss blight, I have come to realize now that we, as a unit in the system, are also a cause of the problem of creating homeless situations with five-to-ten-day eviction notices to tenants. City officials don't have to take each tenant inside a room and house or apartment before a judge, only the landlord or property owner. If there is no compliance to leave, the police and any other law enforcement agency can just kick your door in and pour you and your belongings out onto the street, cite you maybe for trespassing, except in some extreme cases where parolees, they get violation issues. I've sat here in front of my TV, listening about how we can end homelessness. I know now that we, as a government entity, need to revisit our own laws and city ordinances when it comes to evicting citizens, whether it be for probable cause or not. This business of throwing people in in the street without a place to go or protected possessions has got to stop. So I say to you elected officials today, that this great city can do a lot better, and with that, I will submit and move on. On January 9, 2018, Mr. Otis Harrison was here, upset his liquor license was taken, that OD's was ordered to shut down. What he did not say was that he had, what he did not say was that he had received several citations to clean up his establishment and make it safer for customers, citations he ignored that turned into warrants. I know that for a fact, because I wrote up the original property maintenance complaint forms when I first started as a citizen codes inspector, badge number 113. I stayed on this case in the shadows, and when the city finally shut it down, it stayed open anyway, for a while, maybe just to get rid of leftover products, I don't know. But that was so many years of trying to make someone see the light, that a daycare was across the street and three churches. Homicides ran rampant in the two-block radius for many years, so much that 16th Street became known as Death Row, or now the people are calling it the Green Mile. So let us not go backwards on this issue. I lived in that neighborhood most of my life. I have been a part also of the consequences. No more bars in that area is the desire of the people. Murder and mayhem, right now, is down by like 85%. Last but not least is the increasing interest in more Amtrak service in our city. The sound of train horns blaring all day and night is annoying enough, and we don't need anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle?
Good evening, councilmembers, council president. Mark Karowski with Capital Region Water. Here tonight, on behalf of Resolutions 18 through 21 regarding the potential reappointment of two current board members, Mr. Garvey Presley Jr. and Ms. Crystal Skotidis, as well as potentially two new board members, Mr. Andrew Enders and Ms. Alisa Harris. Full in support of all four of those items, I've served both with Garvey and with Crystal over the last few years. They're doing a fantastic job on the board, and I've had the occasion to meet with, I know Andy socially, but I've had a chance to sit with him, as well with Alisa. They have excellent resumes, and certainly seem like could be a very good fit for our Capital Region Board of Directors. So I'm here for any questions you may have later, but just wanted to express my support of all four candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone else to my left? Thank you. We'll move on with the agenda. Approval of minutes, approval of the legislative session minutes of January 23, 2018. Councilmembers, are there any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, minutes will stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committee, report from Chair Madsen on the work session of January 23, 2018. Mr. Madsen is excused tonight, and so he will give his report at the next legislative session. Moving on to report from Chair Allitt on the work session of January 23, 2018. Mr. Allitt, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
And the budget and finance portion of the work session of January 23, we had several resolutions up for discussion. First, Resolution 3 of 2018, this is a resolution approving the collection agreement between the city of Harrisburg and the Harrisburg School District for the 2018 tax year. This is actually an annual occurrence for us. There's no changes to the agreement from this year to last year, so I encourage us to vote in the affirmative for this resolution. Resolution 6 of 2018 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman. This is an IT contract. Steve has provided the expertise on the city's mainframe system, and his expertise is needed going forward until we can adequately transition to a more updated technology going forward. I also urge my colleagues to vote in affirmation of this resolution. Resolution 9 of 2018 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Trout, Ebersol, and Groff to conduct a reconciliation of the compensated absences liability and neighborhood fund receivable accounts. This audit is important to be able to ensure that everything is properly maintained and filed, so I also encourage this resolution to pass. Also up for discussion, Resolution 10 of 2018, a resolution approving a professional services contract agreement with Mayor Dusel, Certified Public Accountants, to audit the city's annual audit and financial report for the year ended December 31, 2017. This is an ongoing relationship we've had with this firm. They've done a great job supporting our audit activities, so I do encourage my colleagues to vote in affirmation of this resolution. Last up for discussion was Resolution 13 of 2018. This is a resolution approving the first proposed 2018 budget reallocations. This is the resolution that we also do annually to deal with the encumbrances, which deals with leftover accounts payable from 2017 that will be passed in part of the budget for 2018. I also encourage this to vote in affirmation as well. Thus concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. Moving on for ordinance or first reading, we have none this evening. And we move on for ordinance or amendment, we have none as well. Ordinance or final passage, we have none. Moving on to Resolution, Resolution 3 of 2018, Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Resolution 3 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, second by Mr. Madsen. It's a resolution approving the collection agreement between the city of Harrisburg and Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and amusement tax for the 2018 tax year.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 3, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Green? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 3 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 6.
Resolution 6 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service of the city's historical mainframe programming operations and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
Any questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 6 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 8.
Resolution 8 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Brad Jones, president of Hairston Enterprises, to convert his existing vacant office space into 13 apartment units.
Questions or comments, councilmembers? I just want to make sure that the public understands that the last time that I made a comment regarding the renovation of old office buildings into existing apartment units, that I asked the developers to please incorporate a low-income housing spec in their development. I did speak with Mr. Jones, and we are going to move forward as a council to make sure that when developers come into the city of Harrisburg, that affordable old housing will be available to those individuals who also request it. So that's the only comment I made, and I said I was going to be watching. I'm certainly going to be watching, because I want to make sure that those who work in low-paying jobs have accessibility to those houses that are being, those homes that are being converted into apartments downtown. Any other comments, councilmembers? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 8 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 9, please.
Resolution 9 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Trout, Ebersol, and Groff, LLC CPAs and business advisors to conduct a reconciliation of the compensated absences liability and neighborhood fund receivable accounts.
Any questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 9 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 10.
Resolution 10 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Mayor Dusel, Certified Public Accountants, to audit the city's annual audit and financial report for the year ending December 31, 2017.
Any questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 10 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 13.
Resolution 13 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the first proposed 2018 budget reallocations in order to reclassify certain allocations and authorize the roll forward of certain 2017 budget year commitments.
Any questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yeah, did we get the language cleared up? I don't think, I'll vote yes.
What language are you in? Did you request additional language?
Remember, we're talking.
Were you talking about striking the one opening whereas of the $20,000? I think that's what we're talking about. Frankly, I apologize, but I forgot that we talked about that.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right. You're okay with that? You're all right?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, please call the vote. Continue.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Was it clarified that that change is going to be made, or was it not going to be made?
He didn't make it.
We did not make it. It doesn't have any actual impact on it. You have a motion to strike that language from the resolution, if you want it to be out of there, or we could amend it that way. It doesn't change the actual, what you're voting on in terms of materiality, one way or the other.
Okay, all right, okay. Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 13 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 14.
Resolution 14 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, second by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Scott Dumwood, he'd on behalf of Bethesda Mission, to renovate and expand the existing Bethesda Mission Community Center located at 1438 Herr Street.
Questions or comments, councilmembers? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yeah.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 14 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 15.
Resolution 15 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for use of certain city property for the installation of the wireless communications equipment.
We place in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution 17.
Resolution 17 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Majors, second by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to exercise power of the eminent domain pursuant to Chapter 128 of Third Class City Code, to acquire such property as necessary for the construction, erection, and extension of permanent public works facility, which shall include the parcels identified herein.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution 18.
Resolution 18 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution reappointing Mr. Garvey Presley Jr. to serve on the Capital Region Water Municipal Authority Board of Directors.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 19.
Resolution 19 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution reappointing Crystal Sokidis CPA, CFE, to serve on the Capital Region Water Municipal Authority Board of Directors.
That also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 20.
Resolution 20 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Andrew Enders Esquire to serve on the Capital Region Water Municipal Authority Board of Directors.
That also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 21.
Resolution 21 of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Alisa E. Harris to serve on the Capital Region Water Municipal Authority Board of Directors.
And that also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 22.
Resolution 22 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter to a professional services contract with Marathon Capital Strategies LLC to serve as the city's limited-purpose financial advisor.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 23.
Resolution 23 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Central Pennsylvania Building and Construction Trades AFL-CIO in support of cooperation to assure properly-trained and skilled workers shall be available for future certain major public construction projects.
We place in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution 24.
Resolution 24 of 2018 is moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter, negotiate and agree upon the terms of a memorandum of understanding with the Harrisburg Downtown Improvement District Incorporated and the County of Dauphin to offset downtown parking, meter, and enforcement revenues for the hours of 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Old Business, councilmembers, do you have any old business this evening?
Well, I guess it's all business, but I just wanted to remind everyone that the city's first.
Wanted to remind everyone that the city's first fire and ice event is coming up this March 2nd, and to ask residents to participate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
Can I, can we get an update on, I know the police, they had a meeting on Tuesday during our workshop session, and I asked if we can get like an update of how that went.
Would you like that at the next workshop?
I would ask the mayor. I thought he might connect with the police.
Okay. I can give you a little bit of an update, but I would say, just generally speaking, if you would like updates, just let us know in advance, so I can be sure to have the...
I talked to you. I said, hey, you say, remember at the meeting, I said, hey, I heard there was some rustling amongst like the public, like last Tuesday, while our meeting was going on, and I was saying, hey, can you connect with them and get back to us with an update?
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know you wanted it tonight, but that's fine. The bottom line is, there was a meeting that the police helped to spread the word for, for a debriefing for residents in the immediate vicinity of the recent tragic shootings. It was held at the Hamilton Health Center, and it was, while flyers were circulated by the police department, it was facilitated by a variety of crisis response folks, all of whom, you know, worked to bring resources to people who were affected. I can say that there were, the attendance was quite good, and the folks were pleased with the outreach that occurred at the meeting. I think there was a general, perhaps misunderstanding on the part of some as to the purpose of the meeting, and I think one of the lessons that we've learned for the future is to try and be a little bit clear in that. The police were, were, did not run the meeting. They weren't actually involved in the meeting. They helped facilitate and connect the crisis response people with the individuals who needed the help. It was not a general public meeting to discuss topics of policing. It was really a meeting designed just to connect people to resources. That's what it was. So, I think they were pleased, and although some people came to the meeting thinking it was something else, a number of people had heard about the meeting since it was so widely publicized and were able to get some response.
I would say just the, just from the feedback, just, I would say, I don't know, just some of the feedback I got was there was, it was definitely, in my opinion, a miscommunication of probably, I think it was idea of a premise of what the meeting was for, which could have been misinterpreted, because no one, because it was the first time we as a community have taken that step of bringing the Keystone Crisis Intervention Team in to kind of do like a, whatever be, a debriefing of the events. But I think one thing, it wasn't really clear when it was describing communities surrounding the events. There's no, there wasn't, it didn't give like any type of borders, anything, this and that. It could have been, you know, the events that happened there as far as the Capitol Police and the U.S. Marshal Incident, they affected numerous communities because they were both national news, so they didn't kind of say what the surrounding communities were. It could have been as far as Pembroke, Susquehanna, or I live a street down on Holly Street. I don't, you know, I'm assuming that I'm part of that surrounding community as well. So I think as far as just like opportunities, learning of just being clear of, you know, who the meeting's for, you know, what's the intended purpose, because I think there was some, some feedback of people feeling like, I think there were people who weren't let in or end up leaving because it was just, it was, a lot of it was left unclear. And I think another thing that can kind of help inside these situations too, is like anytime we have something that I think affects communities, I think, I think it's helpful to kind of, when we're making decisions, to bring in something like a Keystone Intervention or what we feel that community may need by tapping into various community stakeholders to kind of say, hey, you know, this, this event has happened, you know, clearly the community has affected, you know, what can we do to kind of work together? Like, the city wants to be there for this community. What do you, you know, having all those different stakeholders at the table before kind of making a decision, because I think sometimes people feel like, hey, you know, you know, hey, this is a good idea, but it could have been executed this way, or this is maybe the most beneficial, you know, for our community, because every community is kind of different. I think that helps to lead to better reception and overall better success.
Yeah. I, I, I think there probably, it was a learning experience for the police department. I know it was well-intentioned, and I think they were pleased with, with some of the connections and that were made at the meeting. I know that various family members of the, you know, the immediate families involved did come and were able to receive positive connections with the crisis intervention folks. So I think from that standpoint, the meeting was very successful. I think from a communication standpoint, were we to do it again, we'd probably advertise it differently.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just quickly, it got reintroduced last fall, but we did not get it to discussion in committee, but the two resolutions for the debt policy and the general fund balance policy, if we could reintroduce those this year.
We'll, we'll, we'll redone them later.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. New business, council members? Mr. Majors?
Couple of, just a couple of quick announcements. So this Saturday, the Women of Alpha Kappa Alpha will be holding their 20th Annual African American Read-In. That's Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at Stilton High Spire Elementary School. It's a great day to bring out students and kids from all over to interact with adults. I'll be one of the readers, and I know some other council folks have participated in the past, so just want to have a good day of fun and learning and being able to get access to books that were authored by African-Americans. Next, just want to make an announcement. I know Capital Region Water recently just announced their City Beautiful 2.0, their, their plan. You can visit the Capital Region Water website to take a look at that plan. As we know, our infrastructure is ailing, and they are looking to spend over $300 million over the next 20 years to invest in our water and sewage treatment in the City of Harrisburg. So I'd encourage folks to participate in these conversations. And to that same end, on March 7th, believe that's the correct date? Yeah. The city and Capital Region Water will be partnering to do a workshop to get information out about how to do business with the City of Harrisburg. We're definitely encouraging MBEs, WBEs, and DBEs to participate and learn how to do business. As I just mentioned, a lot of money will be flowing through the City of Harrisburg to do improvements to our ailing infrastructure over the next 20 years, and we want to encourage all businesses to participate, but especially folks that are in those communities, as this is going to be having a large impact on our city, so we want to ensure that everyone, at least, if you don't have a seat at the table now, you learn how to be able to get a seat at the table to participate. I know Capital Region Water has been aggressive with trying to improve their MBE, and we want to encourage them to do that, and we want to encourage the city to encourage, excuse me, encourage the city to increase our MBE participation as well. I know we've been working with the administration, and I know Councilman Johnson has been leading that effort as well. So we just want to make sure people are aware of the dates. On March 7th, that will be at the Capital Region Water facility, that meeting from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. You have an end on the City Beautiful 2.0 project. You have until March 12th to provide public comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
So just piggybacking off of Wes in regards to major development happening across the city. So when we think about major development, you know, we have, you know, public entities such as the City of Harrisburg, we have CRW, which has their $315 million plan, we have other entities, which I would call them like flagships, like Harrisburg University with their proposed possible $150 million new tower, we have the Federal Courthouse, we have UPMC Pinnacle, who's always making updates, Pennsylvania State Archive Building, Transportation Center, and just various, various infrastructure spending plan. These are millions, millions, and millions, probably, if someone was probably tabulating when it's all said and done, you know, it'll be over $500 million happening just within, within this area. And for that very reason, that's why I've been trying to more or less champion or, you know, push the effort of encouraging the city to really be pioneers and leaders in ensuring that MBEs, WBEs, any type of DSBEs are at the table and are included. I think it's important for us to lead by example, because I think it's important for us to kind of encourage and work with our flagship partners such as Harrisburg University, you know, and various other entities to, you know, hopefully develop a supplier diversity program. But we can't begin to, you know, have those discussions if internally, you know, we're not at the table and doing what we need to do to ensure quality participation even within our contract. You know, recently I just asked for information in regards to our spending, you know, by department to kind of see, how much money does, you know, within, you know, Public Works or Finance or Slister's Office, do we spend in contracts? And then being able to analyze that in regards to what are we doing as far as who and what enterprises that we're spending our money with. I think it's important for us to have that understanding to be able to figure out, you know, what type of opportunities may exist in those parameters. I know several, several cities track their spending, and they make conscious efforts for goals for equitable participation by all business enterprises. I think it's important for us to do it. And I know internally, you know, we are beginning to, to look at our program, but every day the city's still open for business. We have two solicitations that are up right now, one being the police substation, and within, within that contract, there is aspiration goals of, you know, 25, you know, under the U.S. Civil Rights Act of 1974 and all those CFRs, but there's aspiration goals associated with that with 25% MBE participation, 5% WBE precipitation, 15% for City of Harrisburg resident workforce, and 15% minority employment workforce participation. But we have to be championing that. You know, there's a lot of contractors in the city who don't even know how to find that information. In order on our, on our website, it takes six to seven clicks just to get to solicitation. There's been no advertisement outside of Penn Live, not even Penn Live, I would say the Patriot News, which is our physical paper, which are clearly outdated, which people, you know, aren't checking for. So I think if we want to be able to be leaders inside this, I think we have to do more. I think we have to connect and work with our local chambers of, you know, African-American chambers, Latino chambers, Cretic, of getting this information out and making sure that everyone knows what's going on and, and how to participate. So for instance, you know, within our solicitation, you know, there was a pre-bid meeting held today, but with, on our website, it's not even, that date's not even listed. It doesn't go until you go to the Penn, the Penn Bid website to kind of find that information. So we're not making this information any easier to kind of, to allow for these disadvantaged businesses to participate within these contracts. And I think it's very, very important that we are intentional, and I think it's very, very important that we are really, really pioneers in it, because as I said, we're open for business every single day. We're going to continue to move forward on work, on work contract, but I think it's important from a council, you know, if we really feel like this is a priority, that, you know, it may take us slowing, slowing things down for us to look at numbers, to kind of make sure that, you know, while we are wording contracts, that, you know, we have all the data and empirical data to kind of say, you know, how's the city spending our money? So I'm trying to work with the administration to be partners in this endeavor as far as, you know, getting that information to kind of see whether if it's a, from encouragement standpoint, is it more of a policy standpoint, but we have to do more, and I think we're really falling short. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Since Council Mattson, Councilman Mattson is here, and I know he was probably going to make this announcement as well. Next Tuesday, February 20th, is the, the city will be having a meeting at the Latino American, the Latino Hispanic American Community Center located at 1301 Dairy Street regarding the allocation of housing and community development funds. We encourage the public to participate in this process. That'll be from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. next Tuesday, February 20th. So just wanted to make that a public announcement, and we encourage residents to do it then.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President, could I just briefly take a moment and acknowledge the, the passing of Mr. Lefridge, who, whose services for whom were, were held at St. Paul's Episcopal Church this past week, a pioneer businessman in the city who operated a family-owned business for 58 years.
Okay, thank you, sir. I did forget about that. Mr. Grover, would you take this opportunity to introduce our new, new attorney for the[1711.11]